Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. And before we start our regular meeting, could we all stand up? We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as our. My keys keep standing for one second. I'd like to have a moment of silence for James Patton, former Veterans Agent of Millville, who passed away on October 7th. And our sympathy is extended to his family and friends. Okay, thank you. Okay, announcements we have. After the release of the US Census Massachusetts, it is constitutionally mandated to change its house state governors council and congressional district boundaries to accommodate shifts in population and provide equal representation to its citizens. Effective January 2013, Millville will be represented by Congressman James McGovern rather than Richard Neal. Congressman McGovern visited the town last Thursday and toured some of the facilities and met with some town officials. We look forward to working with the Congressman. The Board would like to thank Margaret Carroll for making the arrangements for the visit and to all the town employees, Board members, and committee members who participated in the meet and greet. The last day to register to vote for the state federal election is Wednesday, October 17th. After the town hall is closed, phones will be available at the police station. The Milford nursing, uh, Milford visiting nurses will hold another flu clinic at the senior center on October 18th from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Bring your insurance card, wear a short sleeve shirt, and it is for Millville residents and Millville employees only ages six months and older. The Board will not, will not meet again until November 5th. We wish everyone a safe and happy Halloween, and we remind motorists to be cautious on Wednesday, October 31st for children in their own ways. Now, we have some approval for minutes. We have October 1st, 2012, at 6:00 p.m. And all were present, so I'm looking for a motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have minutes from October 2nd, 2012, at 2:00 p.m. Uh, 7:00 p.m., sorry.
Motion to accept October 2nd. Meeting at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I stand.
Aye.
Aye. And October 9th, 6:00 p.m. Were present except for Mr. Baker.
I make a motion to accept October 9th.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Reports of town officials, we just spent three hours here and there. Ever anymore? First public forum. Correspondence, I had one, but Mrs. Blantle put it in her report. Appointments and resignations, none tonight. Executive Secretary report. Uh, we don't have any problem here.
Yeah, your name is on that, but it's not listed as being present, so you can just cross that out. That's fine. First item on my report, Mr. Duffy, Chuck Duffy over at the Potbelly Pub, has advised that he will be holding a charitable event this coming Saturday, and he's asked for the Board's approval to utilize the rear lot for parking during daylight hours. So if that's okay with you.
The chief, I'll set with him.
I haven't even spoken to the chief about it, but I'm fairly certain he will not have an issue, as he's never had an issue in the past.
Well, they just did do one a month ago?
Correct, yeah.
And that went well.
The rear lot, across the railroad tracks?
Yeah, behind, behind the pub.
Make a motion to approve with the, um, with the approval of the police chief.
I'll second that. And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do they need permission to cross the railroad tracks? By the way?
Um, no.
No, just?
Actually, I don't think they crossed the tracks. I think it's before the tracks.
Well, this side of the track. Once they did ask permission to cross for bigger functions, uh, so we had police officers in that case patrol to make sure no one parked down the tracks.
And this just serves as a reminder that at the Board's next meeting on October 5th, National Grid will be, or you will be holding a public hearing at the request of National Grid, and notices have been sent out to all the abutters, and it will be published in the Milford Daily News. November 5th is the Board's next meeting. Did I say October?
Are we gonna be meeting again? Because the booths.
Yeah, we'll still meet.
Should we select a different, like, an upstairs room, or?
I can check with Brian to see when he plans on setting those up, but.
Just with the election the next day?
Yeah, we've met with the booths up before, and it hasn't really caused an issue, so, but I'll, I'll check.
Depends on the crowd, eh? Tonight would be difficult.
So if the, um, if the Board doesn't have any issues with this hearing notice, we'll get that published.
What is, I don't have a problem with that. What is this for? Because it doesn't give.
Uh, this is for the, um, the transmission lines, the new transmission lines.
Is this the one that?
So they're very specific abutters that were involved in this.
Is this the one that the, our building inspector recommended not approve? Remember he, it's, they had applied for, do they apply for?
The former building inspector. The current building inspector has worked with National Grid, and I believe that issue has been resolved.
Okay. But it's that same area?
That same, yeah.
From Providence Street?
Mm-hmm, correct. I'm also pleased to report that the evening of October 9th, I was informed that the Town of Mendon Board of Selectmen did sign the five-year regional dispatch agreement with Millville. The originals are now being circulated to the town accountants and the town councils. But that has now taken place. So the existing contract expires November 2nd, and then the new one will kick in following that.
Okay. Good. Yeah. Two weeks. Man. Saves a lot of money, too. Now is it?
No.
Oh, I was gonna say, wow, that looks like the pile she has.
Not as bad as it looks.
As big as the mountain, she had.
This next sheet I'm passing out is the, um, the schedule for the warrant articles. The Board's intent is to close the special town meeting warrant at the next meeting on November 5th. So what I'd like you to do, you've got three weeks between now and that time, is to put some thought into if you'd like any articles submitted, or if the Board as a whole would like to submit any articles for that warrant. If you could let me know at that time. I will, on behalf of the Board, I will be submitting two articles. One is a transfer of $50,000 from the MSBA refund money to the MES water. And the second, providing the Finance Committee approves a reserve fund. The second will be a $32,000 transfer from the MSBA money to replenish the reserve fund pending the Finance Committee's approval. And what I'm passing out to you here is the way those MSBA funds stand as of today. The original amount received was $664,738. To date, $490,685 has been expended with respect specifically to the MES water issues. There's been $120,000 appropriated for the MES structural expenses. Of that 120, about $30,000 has been spent. And then with the $32,000 that will be appropriating for the MES oil tank, that will only leave a balance of about $13,000 in that account. So I just call that to your attention.
Sir.
No, and it's just disturbing, because the water, it just, it was a nice little chunk of money to have for future projects, and, and essentially, it's two projects. One really big project, and then this.
Yeah, well, the MES water was actually of many different projects, because it included the creation and building of the water filtration system, the old tank.
But it was all one issue.
Right. It was all about that.
All we would have had to do is put a pipeline to Blackstone or Oxbridge.
So, no, it's just, it's just a shame, that's all.
It didn't save, it didn't save that much when it started.
Yeah. No, I know.
This I just received today, although it is dated on the front, September 7th. I just, to let you know, I didn't receive it today. This is the second opinion, if you will, of the engineering analysis that the Board had requested with respect to the structural issues up at the elementary school. This was performed by the engineering firm of Castle Booze. So what I'd ask is that you just take the next couple of weeks to familiarize yourself with it, and if it's okay with the Chair, we'll put that on the agenda for November 5th.
Okay. Did, did Michael Fitzpatrick? Is he gonna get a copy?
He will get a copy. He hasn't seen it yet, but I mean.
Did he say a lot of this was, uh, doesn't, no warrant for it? I mean, it was just, a lot of it was just, uh?
You did.
A lot of it was.
Well, I know, according to what the first engineer had reported, Mr. Fitzpatrick, I think, made some comments that that was a little extreme. I don't know that this report is nearly as extreme as, as theirs.
Can I have a copy?
Sure, yep. I don't have one, I'll get you one.
I think for the best of the public to know, I think a lot of this was, after the building inspector and Paul took a look at it, a lot of it was just, some was just settling cracks, and it was just, social officials, it's just ridiculous, some of the stuff that they came up with. Yeah. So.
And this report does not give a cost estimate of the repairs either, so I have emailed the engineer to see if he can give us a ballpark, because I think the other engineer was one and a half to two million, or some type of crazy figure, so I am gonna see if I can get a number from him.
It was about one and a half million, too much, the last guy.
I'd like to tell the inspectors, uh, what you guys say about this. Would this cost us?
Uh, that was 18, I think, that the contract signed, yeah.
It's not even in column.
That's the business you want. Just walk around, point out cracks.
Eighteen thousand dollars.
Make sure they have life suits.
That should win college.
I'm still paying student loans. Today's not worth it. Some days, $20,000 you get for.
Right, good check.
Twelve classes.
This document that just got passed around, it's actually two. The front is an email and an estimate for a new floor for the kitchen at the elementary school, and in the rear of that is a three-page, the three-page inspection report from the health agent. So when the health agent did his annual inspection up at the elementary school, he noted that there were some cracks in the kitchen floor that needed to be repaired, because they attract bacteria. Apparently, the school district or the custodial staff had somebody look at the floor, and they've reported that it cannot be repaired, it must be replaced. Of course, the cost is over $20,000, which would qualify for a capital expense.
Four hundred square foot floor for over $20,000.
Yeah, I think, has the building inspector looked at this at all?
No.
That I do not know.
Yeah, but it?
Uh, I think the building inspector needs some input.
Today's day and age, they make apoxies and crack fillers for anything.
And that's what the health agents, that's what the health agent said, it just needed to be filled in, and, you know, but they're claiming that you can't with this type of floor, so.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Again, if, um, if you can take, you know, a couple of weeks and look that over, and I'll put that on the agenda for the 5th.
Yep.
I will get the building inspector.
Involved.
Copies of these documents, and I'll see if I can get a comment on that from the health agent.
Thank you.
And that's at the onend, $20,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, almost 25.
Fourteen hundred square feet.
I think.
That's two hundred dollars a square foot.
At that school, I don't know, was that the board epoxy, did they say?
I can't remember. He did tell me, and I honestly don't remember.
A couple of gallons of epoxy, Charlie, you just cut the seam, you cut the cracks.
Just the reception?
I've seen them, they cut the cracks, and then they fill it.
I mean, why replace the whole kitchen floor when you might have to do a section?
That's my point.
Does it have to match? Does it, you know what I mean? If it's in the kitchen?
Jennifer, you can buy a gallon cans of epoxy, mix it up, put it on the floor, spray it like a squeegee, and a couple hours later, after it sets, or maybe a day or two later after it sets, bring the floor.
Maybe just scrape up the VCT that's cracked and replace strips, stripes, or sections of it.
But this is frustrating. You know what, and this is coming from the company that Kitchen Flooring.
It says here.
It's out of New Jersey. There's gotta be someone local.
I see, change, change, that's what I see.
And peeling needs repair.
Doesn't say replace, says repair.
Permealing wage.
That's what the cost is. Ridiculous.
About $200 a square foot for a VCT floor?
And this quote's coming from someone out of New Jersey. There's gotta be someone local that.
Food stored with chemicals above sink.
Those are just the.
That's the food service director.
That's a soup for, yeah, exactly.
That's just what they got cited on.
Lob bucket in dining room, dining area.
Yeah, the food service director, fix all that without cost, it's just relocated.
The superintendent has addressed on the email on the front how those things have been handled, so the majority of the other items are being addressed. This last thing I'm passing around is a copy of the regional school district agreement, which was originally signed back in March of 1967, and then amended in 1985. There's been some rumblings throughout the towns that Blackstone may be looking to withdraw or dissolve the regional agreement and go on their own. So I'll, I put a little blue mark for you, the paragraph that identifies how one of the member towns can go about withdrawing. And as you'll see, it's not an easy process. Communications with the school administration, they have not received anything in writing from Blackstone indicating that they're seeking to withdraw. So in my conversations I've had with some state officials and local officials, I've been advised that Millville should not even give this a worry at this time. That the cost alone, in addition to the political and other issues that will arise if this should come into play, it's likely that it will never happen. So I've been told, don't even waste your time on it at this point, so.
So this is 213?
It'd be an awful expensive.
No, there is no, there is no date, there is no expiration.
So why are we?
That, that was my original communication with the superintendent, is it, am I missing something?
So if it's no expiration, why are we looking at, what amendments? Is it something proposed by the regional?
Nothing's been, nope, nothing's been proposed at all.
By the school committee?
Nothing by the school committee, nothing by Blackstone, to the knowledge of the school administration.
So why is this even being brought up?
It's all rooms, it's.
At this point, that's what I suspect.
Well, no, I mean, the reason I ask is because I know there's been some conversation because of staffing, class size, blah, 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 about regionalizing right from K through 12. So I didn't know, and I have my own position on that, but, so I wasn't sure if the regional was going to be asking to fully regionalize. I know that was a plan that's been floated around a couple times.
Just make good fires.
Because I was at that school committee meeting. And I couldn't believe my ears, so that was last budget cycle.
I don't even know why they're bringing this, I don't even know why they're bringing this up, Jennifer, because all this thing is just.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering.
A tailspin with everybody getting all, getting their feathers ripped.
It's not a deal, we just have to build a new school.
No, but I'm just wondering, who's prepar, if there's no expiration, why are we talking about if no one's proposed anything?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, just because that statement was made, I just wanted the Board to know that we are looking into it, just to make sure that there's nothing, you know, that we should be looking at right now, but it doesn't appear that it's anything that the Board should worry about at this time.
Okay.
Imagine one of these schools was lost?
No.
If cracks on a roof for 1.5 million?
The last thing I just.
You have plenty of room up there.
That's another ridiculous number.
Last thing I just want to call your attention to, as you know, we have the primary election coming up on November 6th. The Board will need to sign an election warrant for that election. However, the town clerk did not provide one prior to her leaving for vacation, so I just call your attention to the fact that you should hear from her at some point between now and November 1st. We need to get that signed.
We'll be back until after the 22nd, so. Is that something we have to do in open session, or we can come in to sign?
I actually emailed town council that question today. I believe you can come in individually and sign like you do the warrants, if you're not in question.
Or she can come to our house.
I'll find out from, yeah, I'll find out from town council for sure.
I'll, I'll come here.
She's got a good voice.
Well, Marshall, I'll come here.
She doesn't have enough to do, right?
That was it?
Um, that's all I have.
All right, so the senior van. Okay, so I was looking at the two, and the only thing I see question on is the administration fees, which we do not presently have.
Right, and there's no articulation.
It's fine, we're at seven and a half percent, but what, what is the seven and a half percent of? A hundred dollars?
Yeah, we need to.
Ten thousand?
Forty thousand?
I think they, an email or a phone call needs to be made to clarify.
But other than that, I don't see why we can't start to expedite it, get it sent to legal now, have them look at it.
Well, I mean, we can deal with the numbers.
And we can find out the money situation. We're not signing anything.
What is the percentage of?
Huh?
What was the percentage?
Oh.
Seven point five percent.
Hold on, Jennifer. Right now, uh, the salaries of, of drivers, 80-20. Transportation coordinator salary, 80-20, which is still the same. Insurance, vehicle insurance, 50-50. Maintenance repair, presently 75-25, and they're looking at 80-20. So they're going in our favor on that. Driver training's still free. Gas and oil, presently 75-25, they're looking for 80-20. And then, so.
Yeah.
Maintenance and gasoline, or diesel, whatever type of vans we have, will be 5% in our favor. But now the added cost is administration fees, is that seven and a half percent for us? But we need to know what's the dollar amount that we're taking. So we can ask that question, but in the meantime, I don't see, I'm looking through the rest of it.
The dollar amount for last year?
It wasn't there.
We didn't have any administration costs.
That's this, too. That's this. We don't know what it is.
So seven and a half percent of nothing?
Of whatever it is.
Whatever it is, we don't know. That's why I have a telephone call each day, where you're coming up with this number? What is the?
How much of the, of the council on aging director?
Oh, because we have that, the director now.
Right, so, but we will, but how much of their director's salary is allocated to the van? I don't know.
Right, we don't want to.
And that's what, I'm guessing that's what the seven and a half percent is.
That's a big question. It's a very, it's a very broad question, because there's so many.
Right. The other stuff like gas, it changes every week.
Didn't I pay bills for gas to begin? Didn't I pay gas? Didn't we just pay gas?
Go pay.
I believe Mr. Cool paid the, the last one, through September.
Gas for the van.
No, gas for the van.
I've been using it since September.
I mean, I'll go tomorrow, it just comes to my mind.
What's the date on it?
I think we built.
Yeah, the last one we got was for all of August and the first week in September.
Yeah, yeah. But this, this bill just said gasoline. And I said, I'm thinking I'll pay that. Okay, it's all right, I'll look it up.
Yep, okay, so, but then, other than that, the invoicing is the same schedule. Uh, I don't know, did anybody see anything else, anything? I know we just got it all, we just.
So we have to find out seven and a half percent of what, and then send it to legal.
I say send it to legal now.
Send it to legal, we can work that. But I'm wondering if we need also to say what administration is, because say, Mr. Blanchard gets training something, say somebody else is doing something, or we pick up, we start picking up, what is administration?
Right.
You know, so if we say, okay, well, we're gonna do that part of it, because now we have staff, and we have volunteers, and that's no longer part of theirs.
Right. Well, that's, when they first, and when we all went there back in July, because when they saw the override fail, they said, well, you guys don't have a council, and you don't have a director anymore, so we have to do the administrating, so that's an added cost to us. Well, we're in recovery mode, and we're almost there where we have that service again, so I don't, I don't believe that, I, I do agree that we probably owe them administration fees for the first couple months, that they did it for us.
Well, I think she was also talking about reports. I was sitting next to you and Carol, and she had said something about Karen, yeah, about the reports that have to be sent to the state, but isn't that all data that they would have anyways?
That was my question to her, isn't that what's, that what the transportation coordinator's doing?
That's how I felt about that.
And she said, oh, no, that's above and beyond. I thought that would be a part of his job responsibility. And the other item she mentioned was the billing, sending us the bill every month as part of the administrative expense, so.
All right, so we're gonna find out what that percentage is drawn from.
I mean, it certainly looks like seven percent to 92, so, you know, it looks nice, but it depends what the power numbers.
If you're patient, I might be able to give you a number.
I would think it looks the same. I'm surprised. The 120-day get out of business deal is still hanging up.
We're gonna see if it's, if their budget, if their budget itemizes at that, that good online, she's looking right now.
Yeah, yeah.
This is actually their FENCOM recommendation, I couldn't find their actual budget online, but these are the FENCOMs, so I'm assuming the FENCOM's probably very close to what it should be. I'm just looking for the department.
Because other than that, I don't see, unless I miss something, but Gary Bragg will find something, if it's there.
Well, I'll tell you what, then, I'm gonna make a motion that we pass this to legal. Helen needs to find out what the seven and a half percent is, but in the meantime, I like to make a motion to send the paperwork to legal, have them look it over.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could you also ask when we stop, maybe I need.
As soon as it's signed, they left that blank, but.
Yeah, right, it's.
So, is administration, the question I guess would be, there is no administration line item?
Is it director's salary?
Is what I'm thinking. And the FY13 FENCOM was 35,008.38.
For the director's salary?
Thirty-five, yeah.
No, the lawyer.
Eight-three, eight-three nine.
The lawyers, we knew the first contractors.
Yeah.
And they're identical, except for that one item? So why do we need legal look at it again?
I.
I wouldn't, Charlie.
And, and four?
Charlie.
A couple hundred bucks, it's worth it. This is, this will take him an hour to go through this.
It only takes one more.
He'll read this.
It's worth the money, because, I don't wanna say. It's worth the money, because I don't want to say.
Seven point five percent.
Two...
Okay.
If that's where it's coming from, twenty-six eighty-seven.
Hold on, what's next? Twenty-six, twenty-six hundred.
Yeah, about that.
Twenty-six eighty-seven and ninety-three cents. So, I don't know, you know, on repairs, you know, is that gonna, and gas, will they, I think we have to really look at those numbers of what we've paid in the past.
Well, gas is only gonna go up, right now, the full budget, yeah.
Well, that, that budget as submitted each year by the council on aging was always a best guesstimate. Um, we always knew that it could go over, depending on the usage, so...
Yeah. So, I think, just trying to figure out what that five percent in those two categories that they're reducing, does that equal the seven point five? If they, you know what?
If it does, it's a plus.
If we're paying the ball, this is just my thought process, if we're paying the ballpark figure of what we expect to, I don't care how they use the money.
Yep.
I just, I wanna make sure we have the service.
Yep, my thoughts, exactly. Anyway, all right, so we'll send this to legal and find out what that dollar amount is.
Okay.
Next, we have the oil tank bid one.
Yes, uh, the town's engineering consultant, um, Cushing Jamalo, Maria Wheeler, Joe Jamalo put this out to bid. Um, because it fell under twenty-five thousand dollars, it doesn't have to be, uh, formal written bids, but you do have to, um, at least keep, um, it in writing as to what you requested, so, as long as you request three bids, you don't necessarily have to receive three bids. Uh, of the three he requested, um, he received two. Uh, one was twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars, and the second was nineteen thousand one hundred forty. Um, so they are recommending, and I concur, that the board award, and this is for the removal of the existing and the installation of the new oil tank, um, to R.J. Gavoni Construction out of Worcester. And I just point out that the nineteen thousand one hundred forty is solely for the removal and installation, it does not include if they do find contaminated soil once they lift the old one, if it's gone through that second lining, it's a whole different ballpark.
Okay. What is our threshold for repairs for the district?
Is twenty. But, but with the ten thousand for the...
The engineering.
Engineering, the project in itself went over. Now, had it been addressed as a preventative maintenance in 2008, it would have been probably four or five thousand. So, yeah, unfortunate. Um, so your, your motion would be twofold, it would be first to award the bid to R.J. Gavoni at nineteen thousand one hundred forty dollars and seventeen cents, and second, I'd be asking you to authorize the chair to sign two originals of the contract.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion for the chair to sign the, uh, would you say two?
Two originals.
Two originals?
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye, all in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
And while we're on that subject, um, I do have the reserve fund transfer request. And because there have, there wasn't funds set aside for this particular purpose, it is considered an emergency. Um, DEP is requiring that we deal with it immediately. Um, the amount I'm requesting is thirty-two thousand dollars, eleven thousand four hundred fifty, which covers the consultant's fee per the contract, and nineteen thousand one hundred forty for the vendor per the bid award. Um, and I'm also, I've slightly increased the amount just to, um, cover any incident, incidental costs of the consultants, such as gas and copying. So, you'd have to vote, um, to approve of the reserve fund.
Okay, request used, it will live it down. So, the amount requested is thirty-two thousand dollars, reserve fund transfer.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sign away, Jennifer.
All right.
Board of selectmen policies.
I had a bunch of policies, um, on my computer that had been approved over the years by various sitting boards, some while I've been here, some even prior to my employment with the town. What I did was I just went in and I cleaned them up a little bit, reformatted them, fixed any typos, and what I'm trying to do is just compile all policies that had been voted on by the boards into one book, um, so that we have them handy and everybody has a copy and is familiar with them. So, the first packet that you've received are policies that actually have already been voted on and approved by boards, whether it's this sitting board or previous boards. Um, so what I asked is that you just review all of those, and if you're still in agreement with all of them, what I'd like to do is just have you vote to approve them all again, so that I can start, I'm gonna put a date on each one, and if there are remended, we'll go right on the policy and put when it was amended, and keep those in a book. The second packet you received are four new policies that I've drafted that, um, I'm suggesting that the board consider adopting. The first one really isn't a policy, the first one is just a general overview of what your policy manual, um, what its implications are and the nature of it. And the other three new policies are code of conduct, declaration of a local emergency, and disposition of surplus goods and equipment. So, if you haven't had the opportunity to read through these, I can certainly put them on the next agenda.
Yep.
And I also ask if you had any other policies as a board that you'd like to consider or that you'd like me to draft, you know, I'd be happy to do that now, will be the time.
Well, I know there was, there's some discussion amongst a couple of us about newspaper articles and emails, email letters to other, other, other towns officials and stuff, but just, what I, I learned about it was the telegram is, they wrote, they submitted the story themselves, their own reporter submitted the story and published it, but they only got, the information that they received from us was all public records information, it was just back and forth emails, there was no, nobody gave a statement on, you know, or hearsay of what happened, it was emails that were back and forth between Millville and Blackstone to produce the story, that, that's how that, so it was, it was the truth coming out, and some people didn't like it.
It definitely was the truth.
I saw here or there, but it, what it said, and the way it was turned.
But no, no town employee really spilled their guts to the newspaper.
And say, okay.
Right, it was just, they asked information, and they were given public documents. Here, this is what happened, make your story. So, which they could have gotten if they went online and got, and got the minutes anyway. Instead, they came, they chose to come down here and get the minutes.
Show me, make a policy that, well, we're at another town selectmen meeting, that executive secretary has every right to speak, otherwise we don't, we, we won't.
Well...
It's all or none, because...
I think we...
You should, like you said, you should have been able to defend yourself that night in a meeting like you.
And, and, right, and, and we, we chose to eat crow that night because we had the best interest of the seniors and veterans at hand with, with the van, and we didn't want to ruffle feathers, and it was the right thing, it was the wrong thing to do morally, but if you look at the seniors and the veterans, it was the right thing to do to help them. So, we, we ate crow, and I felt like a heel leaving there, not, not fighting back with Mr. Keys, and, um...
I think it would have made it worse.
It's, right, it would have made it worse, and I don't think we'd have this draft of a contract here in front of us tonight. And, yes, can we get our own van? Yep, probably. Can we go with another town? Yes, probably, but now you're looking at six, eight, ten months. We don't have six, eight, or ten months.
I, I think in that environment, and the, the climate of that environment, and the manner in which those meetings are run, that, um, we weren't gonna be right at any point, so...
It wasn't worth, you gotta pick your battles.
It was, you know what, it was, it wasn't pleasant on any front, and, um...
And we'll admit, the last meeting was like the difference in night and day.
It was just like, where to come from.
And then, I was, I was very pleased to see that he, that the chairman took the time tonight to drive out here and bring us the contract, when they promised we'd have it before this meeting, and that made me extremely happy. And, um, but, I think there was a change of heart somewhere along the line, why, I don't really care, I'm just happy that, that we have this contract in front of us right now.
I think he opened his eyes over the last couple weeks, and saw what was really going on.
Well, the four hundred phone calls and emails to Mr. Keys helped open the eyes.
Well...
That came from...
Yeah.
The articles that were...
Well, for what it's worth, our executive secretary did nothing wrong, she did everything right, for the record. And, uh, I stand by her a hundred percent on that, because everything, all the documents, all the emails and everything, and we, all we did was ask for the contract, that's all Helen was trying to do, and it just got flipped around, she did nothing wrong, she did everybody, everything by the numbers, she supported, supported the board, she gave us all the information, so as far as I'm concerned, you did a good job.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Anyway, so, so as far as policies...
Well, there was, this has been, each different sitting board has had a different unofficial policy with respect to media. Some chairs prefer to be the only person that speaks with media, some have said, you know, Helen, go ahead and do what you need to do, so, you can, you know, it, it's up to the chair, uh, if you'd like to...
You've just gotta be very careful what you say, if you say one thing wrong, and that's it, they just flip it.
Because I am more than happy to relieve myself of that responsibility.
Well, we could do is have, uh, the reporter come to a, a meeting of the board.
I think, I think for the best interest of...
Well, I think each situation is different, I mean, you had the emails, you have that information, but if it's something that you don't have the information on, then you may not be that point of person, and someone else may be.
Well, maybe what we ought to do in the future, Jennifer, is just tell the executive secretary, no comment, go in front of the board at a meeting, like Charlie said. And then at least, everybody's here, and, and reporter's gonna have to be very careful what he writes, because, or she writes, because you're gonna have a group of people who's gonna be on tape and this and that, and they won't be able to flip it.
We'll be reporting the reporter.
Right.
You have to remember to stay unified as much as possible, everyone has a higher opinion, whether you stay together.
Yep.
That's what you're saying.
You're right, but, you know, it, when you, but you've just gotta be so careful when, when they come down and it's one-on-one and this and that, and executive secretary says one word wrong and they flip it, best what you say, no comment, well, we're having a meeting next, such and such, come in front of the board and ask the board members, because then you'll get your answers, if we feel like giving them to them, or her, whatever. I think...
One thing I learned is you don't, if you're gonna meet with, with another town's officials, meet with at least one more, one more person from your team. If you're gonna talk one-on-one with them, do it over an email, or, or, or a text, or a text message, and save everything. CC people.
Yeah, but even that, they flip it.
Yeah, but they can't flip an email. Like this morning, well, that, between Sunday and this morning, I had a couple emails back and forth with, with Mr. Wolzniak, but I CC'd Helen, so it's on public record.
Okay.
And, you know, I think it's important also is when you, because I had a conversation with Mr. Wolzniak, and my, my first sentence to anything is, I am one of five, and this is my opinion, but it does not mean that, that the whole board is in agreement with what I say. And I do that when I'm talking to somebody at the market, or if I'm talking to a reporter, that is my opinion, it really comes down to what the whole board thinks, and, and so I just use the standard line to whoever I'm speaking to in regards to town leaderships.
Basically a neutral comment.
It's my opinion, but it doesn't mean that there's gonna be two other people who agree with me, and that's the way it's gonna go. And I always make that statement to anybody beforehand.
Like I said, I, I think moving forward on something like that, when we're dealing with another town or this and that, I think what they ought to do is go in front of a meeting.
I mean, if it's public documents they're looking for, then we can give them to them for the public record. But, I mean, if, if they wanna know information outside of the documents we give them, just tell them to come to a meeting and get put on the agenda.
Nope, I'll draft a, a media policy to that effect, and the board can review that along with the others.
But, I mean, if, if, if somebody wants to speak as a citizen, there's no law to stop you.
Nope.
Also, so, let's all remember that.
As long as you're not putting a title next to your name.
That's right.
Unless they're in Blackstone.
Yep. So, anyway, with that, final public forum.
Can I just?
Sure.
For the warrants, can I get, or can this board get more information on the, I know we got it this summer, um, in regards to seniors working, I just want some more details on that.
Seniors working?
Senior work off, and did you wanna look at the veterans' work off?
Yeah.
That's the new one.
Yeah. Um, so they would come in and work off, and it would pay some of their taxes, but it would also provide a level of, um, help in various departments through town.
Okay.
File and whatever, and stuff like that.
So, it's something.
Do you have people asking for that, Jennifer?
What's your?
I know, you know, some communities have had it, I know it came before, um, years past, it's come before, some people are getting it, some people are getting rid of it. I just think right now, like, a lot of our departments have been cut back, so if you have someone to do those kind of...
Make a little center.
Those, and it gets, one, it's a win-win, you get some work, they get a little bit off their taxes, and, you know, it might just be a short fix, you know, um, but I think it's worth at least looking at the program and having a lobbying committee look at it and say, you know, is it gonna work, and, you know, are we allowed to put a cap on it, so that, you know, we don't have a hundred people apply, and now we're short on money, can we cap it, can we? There's just a lot of questions that I have about it, and I don't have all that information, so, I think it might be something worthy to think about putting on for the, the special.
Okay, I know we did look into it, um, while I've been here, I think it might have been 2007 or 2008, and at the time, it was decided that it was not worth it for the town. I'll see if I can pull all that back out and have that for the next one.
Yeah, and then you pull up Joe's graph, and you see that dip, and you think, well, maybe it might be now. So, especially if we're gonna be hitting, um, a debt exclusion for the roof, for the high school, because there's gonna be some people who are gonna need help.
Okay, um, final public forum? None? Okay. Uh, so our next regular meeting is Monday, November 5th, 2012, at 7:00 PM at the Longfellow Fellow Municipal Center. And motion to adjourn.
I did so much. I yawned when I did it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.